Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, July 6th. And as you can see, we are in person. We are all up here on the dais together and looking so forward to being here. Just a reminder, you're welcome to attend workshops and council meetings, but if you are not vaccinated, we just ask that you wear a mask. So we will go ahead and get started. We have two presentations today. The first one is Environmental Water Quality Program. So we've got Laura joining us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ralph and council members for having us here today to listen about the updates to our programs. Today I'll be talking about the Stormwater Management and National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, and then Evans Swanson will come up and talk about Cross Connection Control Program and the Wellhead Protection Program. So the topics I'll be discussing today are the Clean Water Act, the MPDS permit, our current programs, and the new programs that are under the new permit as of 2019. So this is a little history. This is the Cuyahoga River in Cleveland, Ohio. It has caught on fire 13 times since 1868. And the reason for this is that all of the industries along this river were just allowing their waste to go directly into the river. They thought that's what the river was for, so they thought it would just carry off all their waste with no thoughts for the future. And when it caught on fire in 1969, this spurred the government to develop the Clean Water Act to protect against this from happening to other bodies of water. So that brings about the Clean Water Act of 1972. So under the Clean Water Act, there is a Phase 2 municipal stormwater permit. This is implemented by the Environmental Protective Agency, and it's overseen by the Department of Ecology in the state of Washington. And under this permit, the city of Kent needs to get... Okay. Any questions? Sorry. Let's see if we can get back. That was weird. Okay. Told you I could get it done quickly. There we go. So we need to get, we need to be underneath of this municipal Phase 2 municipal stormwater permit to discharge water from our public system into waters of the state like rivers, creeks, and streams. And part of this permit is implementing numerous programs, which is called the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. So under the former permit, which we've already been implementing, we have these different programs, which I'll go into detail here in the next few slides. But now they've added the MS4 Mapping and Documentation Program. They've added the Source Control Program for Existing Development. And they've added the Comprehensive Stormwater Planning Program. So we're going to go over the public education and outreach. Under this program, we need to teach general awareness. We need to use social marketing techniques, and we need to implement campaigns that cause behavioral change. So this is our Planet Protector Summit, and thank you, Mayor Ralph, for doing the introduction for us to that. It was awesome. In 2020, because of COVID, we weren't able to do this in person. So in 2021, we decided to try to do this virtually, and it was a huge success. Teachers were able to get onto this and watch it virtually with their students, and we had many different presenters, as you can see. So we also teach general awareness, and we're required to pick one target audience and a subject category, but we do a lot more at Kent because we always strive to do better. So we go to Soaks Events, Dog Days, to teach people about picking up after their pets. And there's numerous other things like the farmer's market that we go to. And just recently, we developed a children's activity book that teaches them about pollution prevention and how important our water is to our community and the earth. Social marketing is a huge part of this new permit requirement, and with Kent being so diverse, we really need to focus on how do we reach our entire community. So we're working on translating our education and outreach materials. And we also really want to look at how does the community want to get the information? Do they want brochures? Do they want in-person contact? Do they want social media outreach? So these are things that we're diving into to figure out. And also, we want to implement behavior change. So we have to do campaigns that will implement behavior change. This is a new poster that we just designed, and it has best management practices for automotive shops. So you can see on one side is what to do and then what not to do. We try to make them very, use pictures as much as we can so that if you don't understand English as well, you can still get the message across. This one has been translated as well into Spanish, and we're looking to translate it into other languages as well. And we also have a Protect Low-Impact Development During Construction to try to get contractors to pay attention to that when they're doing their development process. So again, behavioral changes. The one that we're focusing on to use for reporting in our annual report is the Shut It Campaign. With us having so many industrial manufacturing businesses in Kent, we find that dumpsters are a huge issue. And we found other jurisdictions that felt the same. So this is a regional campaign, and it's focused just on having them shut the lid. So you'll see things on this in the future. And it's going to, it's going to really increase a lot of our record-keeping and data because we have to not only say why we decided to do this, analyze its effectiveness, show with documentation whether it's actually working or not. So it's going to be a lot more work. And then public involvement and participation. We want to get the public involved in this permit. It's one of our requirements. And so we have Adopt a Street and Team Up to Clean Up. And this is the way that the public can get involved and actively go out there and pick up the litter that can end up in our storm system if it's left out on the streets when it rains. We also want to get their input at meetings like this. We want to get their input on our stormwater management plan and our City of Kent Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And so there's a place on our website as well where they can give us some of their input. Illicit Discharge Detection-Elimination System Program. This is going to require that we update our database because it has to meet the new requirements to be equal to ecologies. We're working on that currently with GIS. This is a map of all of the illicit discharges we had to report to the Department of Ecology from the end of 2014 to 2021. There's over 300. And you can see that the top one on this is fuel. The reason we're mapping this out is because it will help us better understand where we need to do education and outreach depending on the types of pollutants. And this is why fuel is one of the number ones. It's because of car accidents. This happened actually last month up off of Benson. And all of our crews get together, street, stormwater crews, and everybody gets involved to help get this cleaned up to keep it from getting into our system. We also come across, again, leaky dumpsters and compactors right into a catch basin. This is a potential illicit discharge because they have their grease and oils just outside without proper containment. And these are all things that our crews respond to. This is an actual illicit connection, and that's when a system is connected directly into our storm system that shouldn't be. And this was a grease interceptor. And one of our inspectors on inspection found this and saw the oil in the system and was able to make the connection, and they got that resolved. Controlling runoff from new development, redevelopment, and construction. So this is our construction sites. So they go out, and this is Matt Coy here. He goes out and he inspects to make sure that they have proper temporary erosion and sediment control, best management practices up. He does plan review. He works a lot with the developers on the proper way to install it and to keep it maintained, and then he'll go out and inspect it. And that's to keep sediments and other pollutants from our system. Here it is where there was an illicit discharge when the best management failed, and he's out there taking care of that issue and responding. And then we have operations and maintenance. Operations and maintenance is both now the public system and the private system. So these are our public guys out there, and you guys know them really well, Public Works Operations. They're cleaning a system and inspecting. Where we come into it is I need to take all of the stats on their cleaning and their inspections and make sure that they're meeting the requirements of the permit, and then I report that in our annual report. And on our group, this is Natasha, and she inspects private systems. And she's out looking for things like structural damage, where we have holes in the system, or catch basins that need to be cleaned. She also responds to private drainage complaints, along with our other inspectors. And then we do monitoring. This is a regional program, Stormwater Action Monitoring. And this is monitoring that we all pay into, all the Phase 2s. And we vote on different assessments that we want to look at. And it really tells us whether the program is effective. So we look at different aspects of what we're doing to see if it's going to be effective. This one is the oyster shell, and they found that oyster shells actually remove dissolved metals. So if people have like a metal roof, they can put their stormwater through this, and it will remove metals. They're just trying to see how effective that is. So that's one of the studies that they're working on currently. And we also do in-house monitoring. This is Kira, and then this is our intern Nate, and they're updating monitoring of our facilities in Kent for water quality. And then MS4 mapping. We've always done mapping, but now there's more requirements, and it's its own program. So now we need to make sure that all of the private systems that connect into our public system are mapped out correctly so that we know who's connected into our system. And this is done for illicit discharge purposes and also for operations and maintenance. So this is, the yellow is private, the blue is public, and this is Kent Station. So right in front of the RAM, the catch basin on the map, you can see, that shows us how the pipes go underground so that we know if there's a spill, where we need to go to stop it. And this is new. And then the Source Control Program. This is going to be one of the bigger new programs. And these are some of the properties that we've identified that are going to need to be inspected. And there any prop, there going to be any property that could possibly discharge pollutants into our system due to the type of business it is and the processes that they're doing there. And this is just a preliminary search of what we've identified so far. Just know that each of those parcels could be a warehouse property that has numerous businesses, or it could be a strip mall. So there's going to be a lot to do. This is new. And what we'll be doing is working with them on best management practices. And we've done our private storm inspections, and we've always addressed these in the past. But now we'll be able to do really in-depth assessments of each property and really find out what they're doing, get more eyes on their properties, and help them with preventing leaking cars, or properly storing their oil so it won't spill, or properly handling their hazardous waste so it doesn't leach out onto the ground, as well as proper disposal of their cleaning. The first picture is actually a business that had their janitor sink plumbed directly outside. So as the water was going into the janitor sink with all of their cleaning water, it was coming right outside into the catch basin. So these new assessments will really help us get our eyes on what's going on inside and outside the businesses, and then talk to them about cleaning their mop bucket water. That's a big one. They'll just dump that right out there because catch basin's real handy to take care of that. So what this means for Kent, we've already been doing these inspections as part of our private drainage inspection, but this will give us a chance to do more in-depth assessments and hopefully stop a lot more pollutants. But because we are one of the biggest manufacturing industrial cities on the West Coast, for that matter, it's going to mean a lot more work for our city in specific, up to 500 additional inspections per year because we have to do 20% of these properties every year. And this is the Comprehensive Stormwater Planning. We've always done comprehensive stormwater planning in Kent. That's been something that we pride ourselves on. But this is a new program that we have to do with specific requirements from the Department of Ecology. So what we do is we divide our city up into basins, which we've already done. We look at the receiving water, and we prioritize them based on numerous different types of information that we have on those receiving waters. And we determine which receiving water would most benefit from a type of BMP. And it can be something like a structural one, like the one up in the corner. It can be like the one down below, which is at Point Defiance, which is a regional treatment facility. It can be rain gardens like they have in Seattle. It can be more education and outreach, more robust education and outreach program somewhere. It can be habitat restoration, like we're doing in Mill Creek, or it can be a more robust sweeping program. So we have lots of options to look at when we determine which, sorry, which basin we want and what it, what's its needs. Then we can determine what would be best. So in order to support these new requirements and these new programs, we will need to update our code and our Surface Water Design Manual. And so we're in the process of doing that. So stay tuned. You'll see more information on these coming real soon. And Puget Sound Keepers, they are still appealing this permit. They want us to be held to the same requirements as Phase 1 jurisdictions. It's because of COVID, it's been pushed off. And now ecology and Puget Sound Keepers are in negotiation, but it's been set to go in front of the Pollution Control Board in February. So more to come. So new permit requirements are in place to not only improve water quality, but to improve the awareness of pollution prevention. And our goals are to affect behavioral change within Kent community to prevent pollution and to also implement strategic Kent-specific regional programs to protect and enhance water quality. And these are some deer that Sean took a picture of up at Upper Mill Creek. And that's what we're protecting right there. So in conclusion, this is a citywide permit, and almost all departments are involved in one way or another. And nearly all departments have a role, so it will implement their workload as well. Any questions before we move on to Evans?
Any questions? Councilmember Boyce.
There we go. Hey, brilliant, amazed. You know, sometimes we take a lot of things for granted, you know, and just think about the comprehensive type of work that you guys do to inspect, to make sure that we who live in this city really have good water quality. I'm just curious, this seems, this seems so huge. And I just, for trying to stay out in front of some of these here, how do you stay in front? I mean, you talk about some of these things, but it's still, based on what you said and based what it, I think, take to really manage this program, it just totally overwhelmed me. And I think so far, we've been safe and have good water quality. I'm just kind of, just how do you guys stay out in front of this here?
We have excellent staff, and they wear many, many hats. Our inspection staff inspect private systems. They respond to illicit discharges. They respond to private drainage complaints. And they do education and outreach for me. So they wear many, many hats, and they're very well-trained. And it is going to be taxing on us. What we do is we, we have it all spelled out on a calendar, and we look at what's due next, you know, and you just, you just plug away at it, you know, one day at a time, making sure you're meeting those requirements. And that's what we plan on doing. That's our goal. So it is going to be a lot more work. We're going to have to do some triage and some strategic planning of our own to meet these requirements.
Well, kudos to you and your team. And like I say, we sometimes just take things for granted, right? But they don't necessarily see what goes behind the street, what you guys are doing. So I just want to say thanks to the team and appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
I do have the best team working with me.
All right. That helps when you have a best team. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, so I just want to echo what Bill said. You know, you have a great team, and you do a lot of work. I think that, you know, sort of the unsung heroes, the work that isn't really seen or recognized necessarily by the public. So thank you for that. Question on the lawsuit. So it sounds to me like what you've, what you've laid out is actually a more robust program, but you were saying that they, the lawsuit, they want to turn it back to a previous program?
Yeah, it's an appeal of the permit. So we're a Phase 2 jurisdiction, and then there's Phase 1s. They're like King County, Seattle, Tacoma, the larger ones. They were under a permit before us, and they're held to more stringent requirements. So there's more requirements under their permit. And what Puget Sound Keepers would like is for there to be one permit that everybody's under, which would mean that we would have to do more, we'd have more requirements.
Wow, okay.
But it's, it's an appeal. And like I said, they're negotiating right now, and we should hear more hopefully in February.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Yet another kudos. Just, you guys do so much, and whether it's for the businesses or for residences, and I'm going to put in a plug for Public Works Day because you guys have some great displays and information that's available, whether it's somebody learning what to do with the fats, the oils, the graces in your home kitchen, or whether it's something for a business, even for the schoolchildren as to how the water system works. I really enjoy it and tell people about it because it is a great way to educate the public while they can have some fun and learning and protecting the environment at the same time. I do have a question about the All About Water book. Will any of those be out in the neighborhoods for National Night Out?
No, I have them, and I'm willing to turn them over to you. We just developed them with Gold Street, working with our multimedia group, along with the poster and the brochure for LID. And we've got some more in the works with them, so we really want to up, up our whole education and outreach. So yeah, I'll make those available, and we'll be bringing them to all of our events. And also, like I said, FOG, we didn't even bring that up in this, the fats, oils, and grease inspections. Our people do those as well. So that wasn't even part of the permit, but that is something that our group does as well.
Thank you.
Great idea, Councilmember Fincher. Looking forward to having your group out in the community again. That's the fun part of this. You guys do a lot of really great work behind the scenes. But when you get to get out there and have fun with the community and the young people, I think that has to be great.
It is great.
Yeah, wonderful. Any other questions or comments? All right.
I'm going to turn this over to Evan. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Laura. And I echo Councilmember's statements that we do, and your statement here, we do have great staff, and Laura being one of them, so didn't want to forget her. But yeah, I'm going to be presenting on Cross Connection Control and Wellhead Protection. Let me get acquainted up here. All right. Yes, my name is Evan Swanson. I'm a Water Quality Coordinator in the Public Works Department, and I will be covering our Cross Connection Control Program and Wellhead Protection our Cross Connection Control Program and Wellhead Protection Program and some updates and just general information. The City of Kent Cross Connection Control Program is in place to prevent contaminated water from backflowing into the public drinking water supply. And the City of Kent's Cross Connection Control Program Manual, which outlines our program elements, was updated last year. So some major progress being made. This program is required by the Washington Department of Health and Federal Safe Drinking Water Act of 1974, and adheres to the Kent City Code, Chapter 7.02, the Uniform Plumbing Code, and Kent Design and Construction Standards. This program requires purveyors such as water districts in cities like Kent to protect against contaminated water and prevent the potential caused by backflow. This slide provides a diagram explaining when a backflow event may occur. Backflow is the undesirable reversal of flow of water from the consumer's system into the city's public water supply. One scenario a backflow event could occur would be during a water main break when a reduced pressure in the supply piping allows the reversal of flow of water from the consumer's system into the public water supply. This is an example of a backflow prevention assembly at a business in Kent. This assembly was brought above ground, as many of the old assemblies were installed below ground where in the valley they tend to remain submerged throughout the year, which poses a potential contamination threat. It's important to note that high-hazard facilities are a large emphasis for our program. Our Cross Connection Control Program inspectors routinely assess and inspect backflow assemblies at high-hazard facilities to ensure the drinking water supply is adequately protected. A few common examples of high-hazard facilities you might see around Kent include agricultural properties, car washing facilities, and medical labs. Next, next, I would like to provide an overview of the City of Kent's Wellhead Protection Program and its many responsibilities. First and foremost, the Wellhead Protection Program protects our valuable groundwater resources used for Kent's drinking water supply. The Wellhead Protection Program is required by the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act and Washington Drinking Water Regulations. The Wellhead Protection Program protects our groundwater by implementing management strategies to reduce the risk to water supply posed by potential sources of contamination within the Wellhead Protection Area. Kent's Wellhead Protection Area is outlined there in blue, and that's our Phase 2, that's for our Phase 2 sources, so they're all out towards Maple Valley and Ravensdale. Some of the in-field day-to-day operations of the Wellhead Protection Program include groundwater, surface water, and aquifer monitoring. Some of our staff are pictured here performing that, those tasks. In addition to data collection, lab testing of samples taken in the field, and security inspections of our supply facilities. Next, I would like to provide a brief overview of the Clark Springs Habitat Conservation Plan. The Clark Springs Habitat Conservation Plan provides 50 years of protection for Kent to utilize the Clark Springs source as long as Kent follows the conditions outlined within the Habitat Conservation Plan. Habitat conservation measures include Rock Creek Stream Flow Augmentation, Habitat Projects, Water Conservation Programs, and performing spawner surveys. The goals of the Habitat Conservation Plan include continuing to implement the Habitat Conservation Measures, continuing to, continuing an open dialogue with our regulators, the Noam Marine Fisheries Service and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and annual reporting on implementation progress. This map shows the location of the Clark Springs Water Supply Facility in relation to the Rock Creek watershed. So all of the area outlined in black is the catchment area for the water that feeds into the Clark Springs water, water supply. In recent years, Kent has completed two major habitat and flow enhancement projects along Rock Creek, HCM 3 and HCM 6. The next major habitat enhancement project, HCM 5, will be performed next summer and includes replacing three existing culverts to be made fish-passable per Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife criteria. The final capital projects in the HCP is the Summit-Lansburg Road Culvert Replacement, HCM 5, and is on the council agenda tonight for authorization to award. The HCP annual report is submitted to the Noam Marine Fish and Wildlife Service and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to provide updates of ongoing efforts and progress on monitoring and projects. In addition, spawning surveys are required to be conducted every four years to monitor for Chinook salmon, Sockeye salmon, Coho salmon, and Cutthroat trout. The 2020 to 2021 spawning surveys were completed in this last March. Next, I would like to provide an update on the Landsberg Mine Site and the associated cleanup activities. The Landsberg Mine Site is a former underground coal mine located approximately one mile northeast of the Clark Springs Water Supply Facility, which supplies approximately 60% of Kent's water. So Clark Springs, you can see it down there in the bottom right, very important source, and the Landsberg Mine outlined there in red. This slide depicts the location of not only the site to Clark Springs, but also to our other two major water sources, Armstrong Springs and Kent Springs. The Landsberg Mine was an underground coal mine from 1959 to 1975. When the coal mining was complete, the mine collapsed and formed a subsidence trench. An estimated 500,000 gallons of waste was dumped from 1969 to 1978. Kent has been expressing concern for decades about the disposition of contaminants within the mine and the dumping that has occurred. At the Landsberg Mine Site, measurements taken in December 2018 showed three north portal wells with trace amounts of 1,4 dioxide. They're outlined in orange. It's Landsberg Monitoring Well 2, 4, and 12. All other site wells did not detect 1,4 dioxide in the water. Ecology is currently working toward amending the Cleanup Action Plan currently in place for the site, and Ecology has released the proposed amendments to the Cleanup Action Plan to, to address the 1,4 dioxide detections at the north portion of the site. Kent will provide comments during the public comment period currently open from May 10 through July 8 of this year. Ecology has stated investigations indicate there is no risk to the Clark Springs Water Supply Facility, and really most importantly, just kind of reiterating that fact, there have been no detections of 1,4 dioxide at the south portal near Clark Springs. These next two slides provide a status update of the physical conditions of the site. The photo on the left is what the subsidence trench looked like prior to backfilling. The other two photos show the active filling of the trench during the summer of 2019. The trench area where the wastes are located have been filled with clean backfill, covered with an impermeable layer of geomembrane liner to prevent further infiltration of rainwater and stormwater. And in addition, a stormwater conveyance system was construction, constructed to handle the stormwater flow that is running off the site. The approximately 150,000 cubic yards of clean fill material that has been placed at the site was brought in from the Microsoft redevelopment project at the site in Redmond. The, the photo on the left here, these photos got a little mixed up. The photo on the left here is what the site looked like during the installation of the geomembrane liner in September of 2020, in addition to the, actually, they're backwards. So it started, what it looked like first in September was the one on the right, and then the one on the left, and then the photo in the middle is what it looks like today. It's well-established, there's grass growth, and that is actually, that photo was as of just a couple of months ago. And the next steps for the Wellhead Protection Program and the Landsberg, and working with the Landsberg Mine Site, for us, would be just gaining certainty that all steps have been taken to protect water supply and habitat. Adequate monitoring is in place in perpetuity, and adequate contingency planning and infrastructure is in place in the event that it needs to be utilized. In addition to Ecology increasing the monitoring at the Landsberg Mine Site, Kent has added four additional monitoring wells between Landsberg Mine and Clark Springs that city staff monitor quarterly. The photos above show the installation of these additional wells that are being installed, that property that Kent purchased about three years ago, that is between Clark Springs and the Landsberg Mine Site. And furthermore, we are currently updating the City of Kent's Wellhead Protection Plan, which includes a list of potential contaminant sources within Kent's Wellhead Protection Areas. That's all I have for you this afternoon. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, wonderful. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
We are going to move on in presentations to the Mill Creek System Update, and we've got Mike McTudis and Melissa Dahl. Welcome.
I'm Mayor Ralph, Council President Trauner. Councilmembers, thank you for having us. I'm Mike McTudis. I'm the Environmental Engineering Manager for the city, and Melissa Dahl is with me. She's an environmental engineer for the city also. And so we're going to be focusing on the Mill Creek watershed, just some brief descriptions on how the water goes and how it gets from the top of the hill all the way down through to the Black River Pump Station and the Green River, and then talking about the projects that we have just recently completed and the ones that are still in progress, mainly to deal with flood control. But then we'll touch on some of the water quality, but that's been covered in a lot of detail already for you. So this picture actually is Mill Creek. This is up in the canyon. So there's, it's a very natural area. It's not, not a lot of people actually get to go up in there, but most of what we see is down in the valley where it's going through the industrial area. But you can see a lot of the, the gravels and things that which makes for really good salmon habitat coming down the hillside. But that gravel also tends to end up down in the valley when we get the big storms. So we have, the watershed is broken up into two main components. One is down in the valley, as I mentioned, and then we have the hillside. So the valley is very impervious, a lot of warehouses, a lot of pavement. It's about 60% covered with hard surface, which is, which is a very high percentage for a watershed, so the water does not have anywhere to go. And because it's so flat, it makes it very challenging to get the water out and keep it off of roadways and things. So this is one of the more complex watersheds that you probably hear about because we've installed a lot of facilities to try and collect water and to generate some flexibility so that water can move. When it has an opening, give it somewhere to go. So one of the big things that we have is the Green River Natural Resource Area, which is our 300-acre natural wildlife refuge, water quality treatment facility, as well as flood protection. And that is actually, the Green River Natural Resource Area has been functioning now for 25 years. It was built in 1996 to 1997, so it's been providing a lot of services. And the plants, if you go out there, trees and things are getting up to the point where it's looking really good out there. So we get water off of Mill Creek, going into the Green River Natural Resource Area from a diversion channel where it gets stored until it fills up, and then it kind of filters back into the Mill Creek through a separate second channel called the Boeing Channel, which goes along 212th Street and then up West Valley Highway. So that's our biggest source of flood protection for the valley. The upper watershed, which is outlined in the, kind of the, the light green color, actually goes up to 116th Avenue. So everything from about, on the southeast corner of the city, from about 116th flows northwest, goes through the Upper Mill Creek Dam where it's siphoned off. That's, that's another facility that I'll talk about in just a couple of minutes, and then goes down through the canyon, down to the bottom of the hill. The Green River watershed is part of the, the much bigger watershed, which is located within the Lower Green. And then, as I mentioned before, Mill Creek goes into Spring Brook Creek, which goes into Renton and the Black River Pump Station, which pumps it into the Green River. The entire watershed is dependent on the Black River Pump Station entirely. We cannot use gravity flow because that would allow the Green River to flow back upstream into Renton and then up into Kent. The, because of the elevations, the low elevation of the valley, we just can't get it to flow by gravity. So the King County Flood Control District is currently in the seven-year process to update the Black River Pump Station, which is now about 50 years old. So they're updating the pumps and the fish habitat and everything, so when they're finished with that, we would expect to see more fish actually coming up Mill Creek into Kent. There is a lot of focus on Mill Creek because of the things that, like Laura and Evan were talking about with the, the industrial uses down in the valley. So there's, there's a Superfund Cleanups, federally regulated cleanups down in the Duamish, which are, which have been going in process for years, been spending tens of millions of dollars, and they want to make sure that the, the water coming downstream doesn't recontaminate those areas. So they're looking towards us and looking at the efforts that we're doing very closely to make sure that the water that's coming out of Kent and Renton and Tukwila is clean.
So now that Mike's kind of outlined the, the flow of the creek and how it actually functions as a whole, we want to talk to you guys a little bit more about the natural processes of Mill Creek. It is a functioning creek. There's a lot of different elements that drive it, and the way that we like to really break it apart is the inorganic and the organic functions that break it apart.
Melissa, really quickly, Councilmember Thomas, I believe, had a question for Mike before.
Thank you, Council President. Mike, you mentioned salmon habitat, and I live right there at the top of 104th. Over the years, well, start with 1957, we used to fish, have a fishing contest for us junior high kids. I was 12 years old, and there was fish, a big, you know, some nice trout. Then, of course, the, prior to the senior centers being built, there was a shopping center was there, and they just paved over everything, all the areas where the cattails grew, and we used, anyway. So I've heard that it's very challenging to try to get that fish underneath all that underground process that comes out at senior center. I don't know if people even notice that there is a big tunnel there for the fish to swim up. And then they'd have to go up the canyon and then up toward my house where the pond is. So are you actually finding salmon habitat that make it up there?
Right now, there, there's very few that, that make it. It's typically Coho because the
Right.
stream's not big enough for the Chinook and Steelhead.
Correct.
But we are finding some, yes.
Some.
There were more, previously, Department of Fish and Wildlife used to stock the creek.
Yes.
And so that, that was, that was supporting it quite a bit. So the, the numbers have dwindled since they stopped doing that. But with the improvements that are happening, I think we're going to be expecting them to come back. And there, there's a number of projects. The upper dam included a fish ladder to allow fish to get past the dam.
Right.
Which they, they were held back before. And then there is a project in the capital plan to replace the, the tunnel that you mentioned at the senior center, both for flood protection purposes and for salmon passage purposes.
So are you saying that the tunnel will be exposed somehow? They're going to go around then, or?
No, it'll still be a tunnel, but
Okay.
it'll be a more, the inside will be a little bit more naturally configured, even though it'll be dark. But the
Okay.
fish do go through there.
Okay.
I've seen them go through worse situations.
Okay. Appreciate it.
And that's a good thing, but
No, no, I, no, I appreciate what you're saying. That's, in fact, it's very encour, very encouraging, and yeah, thanks.
Right, and then the salmon habitat passage at the Black River Pump Station, which is now, that system is 50 years old, that's going to be updated also.
Okay, great.
I'm glad you mentioned that on the natural processes slide. It was a good transition. I appreciate it. But it is a good example. I mean, we know that there is natural habitat up there, and we know that some portions of Mill Creek are a little bit better in natural habitat than others, but it's still a driving force for the entirety of the creek. And so the pictures you see up there kind of are indicative of what we see and what we really hope to see long-term. The bottom two pictures are actually, I think, caddis fly nymphs and Coho fries, and we have a good image of the salmon lifecycle. The goal is to get to that salmon lifecycle, get those salmon that we do have there growing. And then we also have the food web. This is a complex system, and we want to make sure that it stays a complex system. So all the work that we do in Mill Creek, it's significant for flood reduction, but it's also important for making sure that that food web and habitat that's there is still thriving function. So that's kind of the, the natural processes, the organic processes of Mill Creek. So we also have the inorganic processes of Mill Creek, and the really big driving forces for that really come down to the flow regime of the creek and sediment transport of the creek. The way I like to think of Mill Creek is we have The way I like to think of Mill Creek is we have this big steep portion where it comes down off of Earthworks Canyon. Water flows really quick through there. And then as soon as it hits the valley, it's kind of big old stop. It slows down. It becomes a little bit more meandering. We have a lot slower pace. With that, that quick speed down the hill, we also have a lot of sediment transport. It picks up things along Earthworks Canyon. It picks up that sediment, picks up those rocks that Mike outlined. And then when it hits that bottom, the water slows and everything drops out. And in a more natural habitat that wouldn't be quite as constrained as Mill Creek, you'd see a lot more of kind of that webbing, that kind of spread out flow. And that's a pretty natural habitat. And that's the type of thing that Mill Creek would naturally do if there weren't any development nearby. But Mill Creek is a more constrained habitat. And so whereas before, we might have more of the sediment move out and spread out, instead, we kind of have a more channelized area, which just means, fortunately, that we end up having a lot of flooding in Mill Creek because we have less conveyance opportunity. So whereas before, the sediment might spread out, it's stuck in a smaller channel, which means there's not as much room for the water to go. I know you guys have probably all seen these pictures more than a few times. So I'll quickly move on to the next slide. So to address kind of this ongoing issues, we've done a lot of work and public works to address them. It's never just been like a one-trick or one-stop approach. It's really been kind of a game plan of a lot of different ways to handle these issues. So Mike has talked a little bit about the Green River Natural Resources Area, so I won't go over that again. But really, everything that you see on this slide, it's all things that feed into Mill Creek or directly connected to Mill Creek. So this, the Mill Creek system is a larger system, but it doesn't just stay within the boundary of Mill Creek. There's a lot more at play. Even people that you might not think have feed into Mill Creek, Signature Point Apartments, right along the river, they do feed eventually into Mill Creek through the Green River Natural Resources Area. So it's a widespread area. It's something that impacts a lot of us here in Kent. So moving back to that picture a little bit further, one of the ways that we address a lot of these issues is through the use of pump stations, specifically for the Mill Creek system. So we're going to talk in a little more detail about the pump stations, but I did want to get your attention on this slide really quick. So we talked a little bit about the Green River Natural Resources Area. That's a significant area for the South Pump Station, which feeds into the GRNRA, which eventually goes back into Mill Creek. The North Pump Station up here eventually goes back into Mill Creek via the Boeing Channel that Mike addressed earlier. And the James Street Pump Station, which I know you're all very familiar with, feeds actually into the Horseshoe Bend Pump Station and actually pumps out of Mill Creek. So when we have those high water events on James Street, it doesn't go back into Mill Creek. We actually pump it out of Mill Creek so that it doesn't stay in the system. Which kicks us to our James Street Pump Station slide. So in 2018, or 2016, excuse me, we finished this pump station. And it was never really meant to address all flooding concerns along Mill Creek. It's always been built as a way to reduce the biggest issue we have along James Street, which is the duration of the floods and the amount of time it's closed. So yes, James Street does have issues with closures, but we've been able to reduce the amount of times it's been closed. We've been able to make sure that people are able to continue to safely cross James Street as much as possible. And the earmark for when, when James Street Pump Station kind of kicks into play is really a 25-year storm event. And we've had a few of those, quite a few of those here and there. And we've also had a few storms that have been a little bit larger. So I'm going to hand this off to Mike to give a little bit more context.
So this chart is a, we have a gauge that we partnered with the U.S. Geological Survey at Earthworks Park. It's within the big control structure right at the, at the dam at Earthworks Park. And prior to the James Street Pump Station being installed, James Street would be closed when that gauge would hit about 30 CFS, 30 cubic feet per second. That's when we'd start seeing water over the top of James Street, and we'd see it shut. This, this graph shows how many times it went over 30 CFS just this winter. So if the James Street Pump Station was not there, we're estimating James Street would have been closed for about 550 hours over this last winter. With the pump station, it was about 55 hours. So it, even though it didn't handle everything, it cut the amount of flooding down by about 90%. So that was, like Melissa said, it takes a lot of pieces to get the flooding solved. And that was a big piece. Two other pump stations that I'm going to focus in on, which are going to, which are currently and are going to enable our Green River Natural Resource Area to function even better for flood control, are, we call them the Green River Natural Resource Area, South Pump Station and North Pump Station. The South Pump Station is now operational. It's right at 240th Street and 64th Avenue. So just northeast of where the ICE Center is, right in that area. So it's going to take water that previously flowed north to the Natural Resource Area unabated. And it's going to siphon some of that off and take it directly to the river down to 40th. It goes behind into Hogan Park and then out an existing outfall right at 240th Street. So that's going to take some of that water before it gets to the Natural Resource Area, allowing that to have more capacity. The second pump station, which is in the design stages, was always planned to be at the Natural Resource Area, but it is, it is going to be the most expensive pump station we have when it's completed. And so we have restarted that. This picture that you see, the larger picture, is right at 212th Street. The Natural Resource Area Reservoir is in the distance right there where it's holding the water back. And then this is the outlet coming north to 212th where it crosses and then, and then heads back to Mill Creek. So the pump station in that area is going to take, what it's going to do is, it's going to pump the water along, it's going to stay in the same channel, but it's going to prevent it from coming backwards. So it's going to pull more water out of the Natural Resource Area and allow us to take advantage of the 25% of the capacity that we've never been able to use, just because the water doesn't flow out fast enough. But as I mentioned, this is going to, it's going to be a big pump station. It's going to be somewhat expensive. But it will provide another 25% capacity in the Natural Resource Area during, during the winter periods. It'll allow us to pump it down. And so when storm events come, like the ones we saw on the chart, it'll have more capacity to flow in there. And it'll prevent water from going over roadways on 76th Avenue and over, it'll affect quite a bit for the rest of the valley. The Upper Mill Creek Dam is another project, which was just completed. The picture on the left, that is the fish ladder. So this is at the point where the water gets diverted off of Mill Creek. When water hits a certain amount, goes into the reservoir and behind the dam. So you can see that the inlet is right here. This picture is looking east. So this is 104th Avenue from this, from this vantage point. So the water comes in from the north side, from that diversion point, collects in the reservoir, and then goes in a culvert under 104th, back into Mill Creek. So this project, which, as I mentioned, has just been completed, added 50% capacity to the dam. So it'll take some of the peaks off of the storms as they go down the canyon. So it'll not only take the water off, but it'll, it'll prevent a lot of the erosion in the canyon from happening. And then Melissa's going to talk about some of the other projects down in the valley.
Yeah, and this is more pieces of the puzzle of figuring out Mill Creek. So I know you guys have heard about the 76th Avenue road raising in the past. So the road raising work is a part of a larger, larger piece, I know I'm saying that a lot, a larger piece of 76. We used to have a lot of flooding along 76. And so to address that, we've gone a combination of the existing road raising that has already been completed, but also are looking ahead to complete additional road raising and then some culvert replacement work. So the image that you see here on the left is actually some of the existing culverts that we have in this location. I was told by the project manager for this that she had gone out into the field last week when we had the very dry storm event. She said the culverts looked just like this. We had extreme dry events and it was still packed full of water. The image on the right is the completed road raising that was completed last year. So moving ahead to kind of outline what the next steps are, we're going to be doing additional road raising south of the current location and north of the current location that's been completed. But we're also going to be removing and replacing the existing five culvert crossings. Right now, we have one culvert that goes across the street and then four driveway culverts. We're going to be instead replacing that with three bridges, which are larger structures that are going to be more fish passable and are going to allow for more conveyance. So no longer are we going to have issues of the water being right at the top of the channel. Instead, it's going to be a lot more natural, the channel. So with those bridges, they're going to look more like what we have over here. This bridge is actually one that was designed by the consultant that we have doing the current work. However, ours is going to be a lot bigger. So not to show, throw any shade at Woodenville where that bridge is, but ours are going to be bigger and better. But, but it's a good example of kind of the steps towards having a habitat, good habitat, but also good work for flood reduction. So that work's going to be happening in the near future. And the best part about it is we received a lot of grant funding for both the culvert replacement and for the road raising. So I know that's, that's a positive on top of everything as well. So we've kind of outlined that sediment transport is one of the key issues of Mill Creek. We do have some methods that we use to address it. We do have some annual sediment removal. For example, this is actually at the base of Earthworks Canyon. If you've ever been to the park, there's this nice pond where you can walk out and take a look at. That's actually a sediment pond where the creek runs through it, drops out some of that sediment. And then on an annual basis, we go in, our city crews will go in and actually clear out the sediment. So that's the image that you see on the right. That's city crews removing that. I believe last year, they removed about 400 cubic yards of material, which is a significant amount. And that's 400 cubic yards of material that's not going down into the creek channel below. So we do have a number of structures like this throughout the city. So we, this is just one example of many. And to kind of outline why sediment transport is an issue in Earthworks Canyon, we do have issues of erosion within the canyon. Some of it's just kind of how the creek flows. Some of it's issues where maybe we have invasive plants on the hillside that don't do a good enough job of retaining the hillside. So these are actually pictures from within the canyon that show some of the sediment transport, some of the slumping. It's the same type of things you might see along certain portions of the Green River. So one of the things that we're hoping to be doing is actually collaborating with the Parks Department. And we've been in discussions with them because it is a parks facility and it is something that's used very extensively by the public. And so we want to make sure that we can find an option out there that not only reduces sediment transport like what we have here, but also is going to allow that facility to continue to be in use and is actively used by the public. So one of the things that might be done is some of these, these log structures that you see out there, we'd need something that was native, and we'd need something that would have to be hand-installed. One of the downsides to Earthworks Canyon, and I know Parks talked about this with their cleanup recently, is that it's kind of difficult conditions to get out there. And so we would have to do certain technologies. But the good news is there are things out there. We wouldn't necessarily be the first ones to do these types of technology. It just would be a little bit more unique of a situation. But it's an exciting opportunity, and we look forward to maybe bringing it to you guys here in the near future. So we've done a number of culvert cleanings in the past in addition to the sediment cleanup that we've done. These are some examples of some work that we did, I believe, about 10 years ago in the early 2010s. And transitioned to 2021. Recently, we brought before you a culvert cleaning project to happen this year. We've identified four locations. East Smith Street, which is just the portion underneath the road. James Street, everybody's favorite. Chandler's Bay, just the portion of the Chandler's Bay culvert. And then the South 212th Street. And the way that we identified those culverts as really needing to be cleaned out is we had our survey crews go out and check out all the different culverts along Mill Creek. They went out with their staff gauges and identified the ones that really had the worst condition, and that went straight on our list. So with that, the one that you see on your left is actually James Street. And you'll notice the plants growing right at the top as an example of how high the sediment is. And so when our crews actually went in there, they found that it was about 3/4 full of sediment. And for context, I believe the James Street culvert's about seven feet. I'm about six feet. So a little foot above my head, and it was about that full. So it's not functioning at the best of the capacity it can. The one on the right is actually Smith Street. Not, not quite as bad as James Street, but one of the ones that needed to be addressed. So we've gone through that process, and we're hoping to be in that construction later this summer. Okay, and the Mill Creek reestablishment project. Now, I know you guys are all familiar with this one. So this is an extensive project. The purpose of this project was to reduce flooding along Mill Creek. And it's, it's been a really arduous process. I'm going to say that and be blunt about it. It requires a lot of permitting, and it required a lot of federal, local, and state permits. I have my example or my prop here. This is one of the permits that we applied for. This is 800 pages, front and back, so 1,600 pages of permit application. And that's just for one of the permits, for just our federal permit. And we've, because of the number of stakeholders involved in this process and because of the number of entities involved, it's become a very complex process. And so right now, we're kind of taking a step back and making sure that we find the best path forward, not only address the flooding, but also to make sure that we're going to get something that can get permitted and that it's not just going to be stuck in permitting limbo. Because of that, we have a lot of different people that we have to communicate and interact with on this. And so it's, unfortunately, it's not as straightforward of a process as we'd like. The purpose of our, of this project is still to go out and find flood reduction in the areas that really need it. We're not entirely sure if it's exclusively going to look like the image on the right, which is removing the sediment only. There might be other elements involved. But the start of the project is still really to make sure that that conveyance that is currently choked is opened up. And of course, addressing the key issues that we know are reoccurring issues. The one on the left is Kennebec Avenue, just next to Mill Creek Middle School, which I know Council Member Thomas is familiar with that area. And then also the Little Property, which is actually just across the street from James Street. That's another area that we have identified as really needing to be addressed.
So I'll just briefly touch on the water quality, and then I think we've already kind of covered it. You can see the, the two pictures on the bottom. The one on the bottom left is, there's a lot of turbidity in the water, so a lot of fine sediments. And then the one on the bottom on the right would be more indicative of something you'd see from commercial and industrial sites where you have just all kinds of things. And Laura showed some photos of things that we find on those sites. You know, chemicals and soaps and things like that, they do end up in the creek. Everything ends up in the creek. So that is what we spend a lot of time working with business owners and homeowners on, is just trying to make sure that their sites are cleaned up so that when it gets down into the valley and end out into the Green River and then Puget Sound, that it looks more like the two pictures on the top. And then the last slide is talking about our partner in all of these endeavors down in the valley, the King County Drainage District Number One, which has been in existence for over 100 years and actually owns a large part of the creek. They have separate parcels that were part of a condemnation process way back when, when it was all agricultural. And their whole job was to clean out the creek, was just to keep it flowing. And so they do not have this significant budget capacity at this point. I believe their annual budget is about $600,000. Most of that comes from property owners in Kent. I believe about 85% of that comes from property owners in Kent. But $600,000 a year, which they use primarily just to cut vegetation along the creek to keep the vegetation cleared, is not enough to do the kinds of projects that are necessary to get the system functioning as it needs to. But they are good partners with us. They do give us permission. And they do, they have provided funding for a lot of our projects in the past, as they're able. And the final slide, just a little bit of history also. Right about the time the Drainage District started, this is Mill Creek, right at the, where it comes down into the valley, courtesy of the Kent Historical Society. So we're happy to take any questions.
Very good presentation. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Melissa, this is for you. You mentioned the steepness of the creek coming down from the 104th through the area, then down. Very steep. I've never, I've not been up there, believe it or not. Are you suggesting, I mean, as much of this Coho, your salmon and stuff coming up restoration, are you suggesting perhaps a fish ladder could be a possibility? Or are the fish able to get up? Obviously, they've been doing it in the past, but.
You know, we, I honestly couldn't tell you for sure, but I believe the salmon are able to get up there. I mean, it's good spawning habitat. It's good habitat for them to climb. The thing that kind of gets in their way more is the looser sediment that we have down in the valley. One of the things that happens a lot with it coming down the hillside is we'll drop out all that, the larger material, those gravel, those cobble, they'll drop off. out all that, the larger material, those gravel, those cobble, they'll drop off into the sediment pond and the sediment basin, and then the lighter stuff, the fluffier stuff, as we call it, will actually go down further, and that's the stuff that the salmon don't really like.
Okay.
I'm not as concerned about them up the hillside, it's more so getting them there.
Excellent presentation by both of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, wonderful. Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of our workshop for now, so we will take a quick break, and then we will be back here at 7:00 for our council meeting. So thank you, everybody. Good to see you all. We're adjourned.